Good evening, Spirit and Truth Sanctuary. Hopefully everybody is doing well uh tonight, glad that you're joining with us. Um we have uh begun a new series. And last week was our uh first week in The Power of Now uh written by Eckhart Tolle. And uh it seemed like last week we didn't cover a lot, but last week was maybe the most important week. Um if you didn't, if you weren't able to join us last week, I would certainly encourage you to find the teaching. Uh it's archived uh on our website and you can find it, it's just, it was just an amazing week of his journey of waking up and how all of that happened with him. Uh it was, I've had so many people contact me and say Pastor, that sounds like what I went through, it's something similar, it's it's just something that I really connected with. Um and so uh we are uh in in season or excuse me, week two tonight of The Power of Now. And I'm excited about what it's gonna bring to us tonight. Welcome to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary. Where the whole household of God is both uh welcomed and wanted. We know that uh change happens. Uh it's the only constant in the universe, but we all change at our own pace and in our own space. And so uh we're also aware tonight that religion tells us what to think, spirituality teaches us how to think. That is gonna be very clear in tonight's teaching. That you are not gonna be told what to think, you're gonna be taught how to think tonight. And I love that, I love the idea and the freedom that's behind that. I did wanna say before we begin tonight, um congratulations to uh Dr. Elijah, which is who is one of my uh personal friends. He is a member of Spirit and Truth Sanctuary and a little bit newer, but I feel like I've known him uh for this lifetime and maybe uh another lifetime. But recently has written a book um entitled Madoodle. And it's a book, uh help, it's a children's book, helping children to understand um when someone is transgender and making that transition. And uh so Dr. Elijah has successfully authored that book and this week has been doing nothing but interviews everywhere. And uh television, radio, just am- amazing success so far, we're so proud of him. If you're watching Dr. Elijah, we certainly are proud of you and look forward to you uh sharing that book with Spirit and Truth Sanctuary at some point and so uh very, very proud of the inclusive nature of that book and what it means to all of us. I'll ask you if you will tonight, just to kinda close your eyes, take a big deep breath. As you take that breath and give it back, we are celebrating the beginner's mind, we're preparing the ground of our heart, our soul to be empty, to be void, to allow spirit to lead us and guide us into all truth. We know that uh God has spoken, but we're interested tonight in what God is saying. We know that faith comes by hearing and not by having heard. And so tonight we are open books, ready and willing to receive whatever spirit is bringing our way. Amen, and so it is, alright. Uh you should have your prayer of surrender uh there. And um if you have it, uh we're gonna read this together. If you're, if you're at home or wherever you are, read this out loud. Uh let's do this as our invitation of truth tonight. Spirit of truth, carry me where you will, bring to me what you will, take from me what you will, awaken in me what you will. The Christ man is around me, the Christ mind is in me, the Christ power flows through me, and the Christ mystery exists as me. I believe it, I perceive it, and now I receive it, I am surrendered, amen, and so it is. As always, on Wednesday night, uh we offer a teaching. Uh but then we'd love to hear your comments or questions or anything that you think would um either bring clarity to us, uh give us another way of seeing things. Or maybe a question that's uh that you have, that you may feel like you're alone, but maybe everybody else is is feeling that way as well. And so we encourage you send your comments in early and then uh we'll have, open it up for discussion at the end. Uh also, we'd like for you to download the notes uh tonight, it's in your event description. And uh you can follow along with us. As you download those notes, it kinda becomes yours, this teaching becomes yours, and so you can watch the video and follow along with us at the same time. Our goals for uh this series are really just to continue waking up uh to our full potential, to take full control of our divine creativity and to learn how to enjoy life to the fullest. Right now, we're gonna talk about that tonight. How do we learn to enjoy life? How do, how do, what's the end of all the suffering that we're going through? And so hopefully we'll we'll tap into some of that tonight together. Last week, uh Eckhart Tolle described uh his waking up experience and he described it as a void, as falling into something where he was completely a- aware of things. Um it it sounded a lot like an out of body experience what he was describing to us, and I think uh some people who've been raised in church their whole life become very leery of of descriptions like that, but we took some time last week and actually read Paul's account, the Apostle Paul's account. Where he admits, I don't know if I was in the body or out of the body. I don't know what it was, I was taken into a third heaven, taken into paradise. And so it's not that different than what is is being described two thousand years ago of what Eckhart Tolle is describing in present day. And so don't let little things like that trip you up. Uh we're learning uh also, uh last week we were learning to find uh truth within, not without, and and focusing on the power that is within us, not somewhere else or found at a conference or even tonight, but finding it within yourself somehow. And so we're gonna talk about that tonight, our um our lesson tonight, our subject tonight is the greatest obstacle to enlightenment. The greatest obstacle to enlightenment begins with a story. A beggar had been sitting by the side of a road for over thirty years. One day, a stranger walked by, uh spare some change, mumbled the beggar, mechanically holding out his his old baseball cap. I have nothing, nothing to give you, said the stranger. Then he asked, what's that you are sitting on? Nothing, replied the beggar. Just an old box, I've been sitting on it for as long as I can remember. Ever looked inside? Asked the stranger. No, said the beggar, what's the point? There's nothing in there. Have a look inside, insisted the stranger. The beggar managed to pry uh open the lid. With astonishment, disbelief and elation, he saw that the box was filled with gold. I am the stranger, now this Eckhart Tolle comparing himself to to this this parable. I am that stranger who has nothing to give you and who is telling you to look inside. Not inside any box, as in the parable, but somewhere even closer inside yourself. Now that's uh something you would hear paraphrased almost every week at Spirit and Truth Sanctuary, that we have nothing to teach you. We're gonna bring you the Bible, we're gonna bring you different holy texts, we're gonna bring you different subjects, we're gonna talk about all different types of ideas, but in truth, there's nothing that we have to teach you. Our greatest goal is to remove the obstacles that keep you from seeing what you already know, what you already have and what you already are. So uh Eckhart Tolle says, he can hear us saying tonight, but I'm not a beggar. Why are you associating me with a beggar? Now listen to this, those who have not found their true wealth, which is the radiant joy of being and the deep unshakable peace that comes with it, are beggars. Even if they have great uh material wealth. Ooh, listen to this. They are looking outside for scraps of pleasure or fulfillment, for validation, security or love, while they have a treasure within that not only includes all those things, but is infinitely greater than anything the world can offer. Wow, 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 wow. I, in my notes, I I uh made that bold and underlined that. I wanna read it one more time. Those who have not found their true wealth, which is the radiant joy of being and the deep unshakable peace that comes with it, are beggars, even if they have great material wealth. How many, how many of us know people who have uh a lot of money, but they are void inside, they're in somewhat, they're begging for affirmation, begging for validation in some ways. They're looking outside for scraps of pleasure or fulfillment in some ways, for validation, someone please validate me, please tell me who I am. Uh security, wow, I'm looking for someone to make me feel secure. Uh I'm looking for love. Um old song would say, looking for love in all the wrong places, I think maybe looking for love anywhere other than yourself probably is the wrong place. While uh they have a treasure within that not only includes all these things, so there's a treasure within that does include fulfillment, validation, security, love, all these things, but infinitely greater than anything the world can offer. One thing that we find uh as we study the Bible is uh so many repeating patterns, uh and when you hear someone like Eckhart Tolle start teaching, so many narrow-minded, literal-minded Christians get so freaked out and so scared, really because they don't study the Bible, that's why they're scared. But when you hear someone like Eckhart Tolle teaching, my mind is going, the whole time going, the Bible says it this way, the Bible, this is example. When he talks about finding uh the power within, stop searching for it without or from a teacher or somewhere else, uh it reminds me of the story of the prophet Elijah, who went to a widow's house who was starving to death. She had a son who was starving to death. And uh Elijah says to her, what's in your house? What's inside of, what, what do you already have? And she says, well, all I have is a little bit of meal and a little bit of oil, or a little bit of flour and and oil. I'm gonna make a small cake, my son and I are gonna eat it and then we're just gonna die, we're gonna die after that. And so Elijah says, you don't need anything else than what you already have inside your house. And the miracle was that oil and all this began to flow and it never stopped flowing. Um and what she was looking for was something out there to solve her problem, but really what the the solution was within herself. Uh Jesus said it this way, Luke chapter seventeen and verses twenty and twenty-one, Luke seventeen, twenty and twenty-one. It says, now when he, Jesus, was asked by the Pharisees, when will the kingdom of God come? He answered them and said, the kingdom does not come with observation or thinking. Nor will they say, see here or see there, for indeed the kingdom of God is within you. And so uh if you were raised in church, uh especially holiness, evangelical, um most of the church today is still waiting for the kingdom of God. They associate it with some type of allegory of Jesus uh coming on the clouds, riding a horse, uh feet of brass, eyes of fire, hair is white as snow. Isn't it interesting that Jesus Middle Eastern is always white somehow? Um but we get trapped in this idea that the kingdom of God is coming. Well, when Israel becomes a real, a nation, that's when the kingdom of God, well, Jesus has to come back and sit on the throne of David, and that's somewhere in Jerusalem or around there and we have all these literal definitions of, and Jesus says, look guys, it's not about see here or see there. The kingdom of God, first of all, is not on the way, it's already here. And you're looking for it in all the wrong places. The kingdom of God is within you, it's an inner knowing, an inner awakening. And so we don't have to look for signs of the times, is it, is this the end of the age? Is this now the end of so, is this the end of, oh my goodness, the world is getting so bad, the world has always been bad. It goes in peak, there's always tragedies going on, always bad weather, always people fighting, always one human being malicious to another human, that has never not been, as long as there's been humans on the earth. The kingdom of God is not coming, it's not on the way. The kingdom of God is within us, and we can always, we can always wake up to that, alright. The word enlightenment conjures up the idea of some superhuman accomplishment. And if you would admit tonight, when somebody says I'm enlightened or I'm seeking enlightenment, Tolle's saying, it's not as, it's not as far off as you think it is. And then he kinda breaks it down. Enlighten uh uh or some hu- superhuman accomplishment. And the ego likes to keep it that way, but it is simply your natural state of felt oneness with being. Or in other words, being at one uh with yourself. It is a state of connectedness with something immeasurable and indestructible. Mmm, I like that. Something that almost paradoxically is essentially you and yet is much greater than you. So enlightenment is you, and then it's something that takes us to a gre- a greater state of awareness, alright. Here it is. It is finding their true nature beyond name and form. Alright, so I'm seeking enlightenment, we're taught, we'll throw some other phrases on that in a, in a minute. But I'm stuck on my name, my gender, my race, my religion, my political party, my country of origin, my culture, but I want enlightenment. Tolle says, you can't get it until you get rid of all those forms. Enlightenment comes when you, when you stop attaching to all these forms, keep coming. The ability to feel this connectedness gives rise to the illusion of separation. So when I connect to my name, my form, all the labels that we talk about almost every Sunday at Spirit and Truth Sanctuary, then I have an inability that gives, it, that inability beget, begins to give a rise to an illusion of separation. What am I separate from? Well, everything I define myself as, others are different from that definition. So now I'm separate. I'm separate from, he says, I'm separate from myself, I'm separate from the world around me. And I would say, es- especially from a Christian context, the illusion of separation from God. We are separate from God, Adam ate of, ate of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil, and now we're not in the garden and we gotta sacrifice animals, Jesus gotta shed his blood, we gotta do all, we gotta go into the holy of holies, gotta out of court, intercourt. We've gotta do it fasting, praying, seeking, meditation, sacrifice. We've gotta do all these things to connect to God because we live in the illusion of separation from God. Here it is, I am that which thou art. I am made in the image and likeness of God, I am not separate, watch this, or even other than God. I am at one with myself, I am at one with God, it is all the same, is all the same understanding, okay. Uh you then perceive yourself consciously or unconsciously as an isolated fragment. I'm separate from God, I'm separate from people, I'm separate from other races, other genders, other sexual orientations. I had an argument, now I'm separate from my family, I'm separate from my children. I'm an isolated fragment because I get caught up in 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 definitions and form, all these things, okay. Fear, fear arises and conflict within uh and without becomes the norm. Conflict within, as within, so without, conflict within, if I'm separated in my mind, now that conflict manifests outside of myself. Jesus said, as uh as or your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven, in manifestation as it is in imagination, as within, so without. And so if I, if I'm at conflict with me, how am I not gonna be con- at conflict with things outside of myself? It's just a na- it's a natural progression. I've uh I've lived my entire life, I had a experience a couple of days ago, uh my son and I were working out at the gym and a gentleman came up to us, very energetic and just, you know, just kinda foul mouthed and say, very opinionated, saying all these things. You need to go take martial arts because you don't have yourself prepared, things are getting worse and he was kind of actually talking a little bit racist. You know, the, the, they're coming out here, they're gonna protest, they're gonna, you better get yourself, go and get some martial arts so you can defend yourself. And I just kinda winked at Micah like, listen, listen to this. This is where people live, this is where people's minds are. And this same gentleman had um was talking out loud about a year ago or so and saying some very derogatory things about the gay community. And I just kind of politely said, you know, I'm just trying to get my workout in. Maybe you could take that conversation somewhere else. I wasn't trying to correct him or say let me change your opinion, if you wanna be homophobic, live in your hell, live in your hatred, that's fine. But I just invited him to not bring that around me. And so uh as he was talking to us, he kept looking at me and looking at Micah, oh, you just have, you guys have perfect body. Look at how perfect your bodies are, oh. Then he reached over, started touching Micah on the shoulder. And afterwards I said, Micah, I said, let me teach you, let me teach you a lesson. When people persist and resist things, they're resisting who they are. People my whole life that I found to be ultra homophobic usually are struggling with their own sexual identity. The most comfortable people I have ever found and been around are people who are comfortable with themselves. If I'm at home with me, I'm at home with you. Once I become comfortable in my skin, I'm comfortable with you and your skin, whatever that expression is. And so Tolle kinda talk, taps into that when he says uh when there's conflict within, there's conflict, when I'm racist within, I'm at conflict with races without. When I'm homophobic within, I'm in conflict with myself, now I'm in conflict with everybody gay because I'm not sure that I'm, what am I? All these things come back to finding an inner peace and not being at conflict with yourself, alright. Um it says, being is the eternal, ever-present one life beyond the myriad forms of life that are subject to birth and death. Ooh, we just went, we just, we just took, got on our rocket ship and took a little journey right there. Did everybody hear that? Okay, being is the eternal, ever-present one life. Okay, that is beyond its past, it's other than the many forms of life that are subject to birth and death. What are the forms that are subject to birth and death? Our bodies, okay? This physical form that Paul refers to as a tent, a temporary, temporary housing. I was uh watching a a program uh years ago, I think it was on HBO, it was called Six Feet Under. And it was a show that dealt a lot with mo- mortality, life philosophies, I, I really got into the show. And one of the quotes, uh the, the show was around a funeral home and a family that owned a funeral home, so they were always dealing with death and grief and you know, what does this life mean, and what's aft- what's out there? And so um one of the quotes that was given during one of the eulogies of one of the funerals that this family was uh was uh facilitating was taken from the Hindu holy book, the Bhagavad Gita, and it says this, it says, all that lives, lives forever. Only the shell, the perishable passes away. The spirit is without end, eternal and deathless. I would add there, none of that's, that's, that's kinda conceded to add to the Bhagavad Gita, but I would add eternal, deathless and birthless. And so before I was born, I was. After I die, I am. You are not, the, we are not the timeframe of, I was born December sixth nineteen seventy-two, I will die whenever, whenever the day is that my bo- that is when my body came to be and when my body comes to an end. But I am not attached or defined by that form, why? That is a temporary form that deals with birth and death. Jeremiah, uh God said to Jeremiah this way, before I formed you, before you took on form, there it is. Before your body became something that you defined yourself as, I'm male, I'm white, I'm black, I'm gay, I'm I'm six-two, I'm five-two, I'm, all these things that we define as who we think we are. Before you took on form, Jeremiah, I knew you. I knew your formless, nameless, shameless, sinless, skinless, endless self. If Carlton Pearson is watching, he's proud of me for saying all that right there, that's direct quote from him. Before you took on these temporary forms, I knew you. I knew your enlightened self. I knew yourself that wasn't associated with suffering and definitions and uh s- segregations and segmentations and and assignations and designations, yeah. And so there is an existence, we find in the book of Jeremiah, before form, okay? Then Paul says, to be absent from this form, to be absent from this temporary body, is to be present again in spirit. And so that's why we say, even on on a scriptural basis, before you were formed, you were. After the form ends, you are. Uh we find this in Hebrews chapter six and again in hap- uh Hebrews chapter seven, uh when um Paul is speaking about the mystery of Melchizedek, who is the first high priest uh that um that Abram or Abraham uh encountered in Salem. And so this hi- this mysterious high priest, Melchizedek, scripture describes Melchizedek as, watch this, being without beginning of days or ending of life. Melchizedek exists forever, and it goes and says that he has no gene- genealogy, no, no mother, nor father. And then it says, made like the son of God, exists forever. Then, here's the greater mystery, Jesus then becomes a priest according to the order of Melchizedek. Isn't that amazing? They say Jesus, no, Jesus is not the house of Levi, Jesus is the priesthood of Melchizedek. So that's a very different way of thinking there, okay? So Melchizedek is the first character we find in the Bible that is never born and never dies, is an eternal spirit. And so all this that Tolle is talking about, man, I can give you so much Bible for all this. And so all of the great mystics kinda stay there, they're, they're, they're in this. Most of the world's religions, I want you to think with me for a moment. Most of the great uh world religions, at least five major world religions, their primary goal is seeking eternal life. In Christianity, we talk about eternal life um through Jesus Christ. In uh Hinduism, we talk about finding, finally working through our karma and finding nirvana. Uh in Buddhism, it's talking about the Dharma wheel or the end of suffering or finding enlightenment, it's kinda, kind of that way. Um Islam, Judaism, all have this idea of, even, watch this, even some of our, the great explorers, Vasco de Gama, trying to find the fountain of youth. All of these religions, philosophies are are desperately seeking eternals. So how do we find this eternal existence by being defined with temporary forms? I'm gonna let that settle in for a minute. I want eternals, but I'm defined by my race, temporary form. I want eternal life, but I'm defined by my gender, I'm male, I'm female. I want, I want this eternal life that Jesus talks about, but I'm defined as a Christian religion which will end. Paul said, where there are tongues, it will cease, where there are prophecies, they will fail. What is the only thing that lasts? Love. That's the only form that really we should be connecting with is love. That's why we talk a lot about coexistence and interfaith, all these things kinda challenge our temporary forms. So to be eternal or to, or to find this place that Tolle is talking about, there is a conscious decision, ooh, listen to me, to not be bound by form. So think about growing up in church. How many forms we were bound by? Not just I go to a white church, a black church, a Baptist church, a Methodist church, a Pentecostal church, a gay church, a straight church, a church in the south, a church. Think about the forms in our church, okay? There is a form of, this is how we receive communion. Is it, is it the actual blood of Jesus in the actual body? Okay, or is it uh, is it symbolic, the difference in Catholicism and Protestantism, okay? Um what type of, do we stand when we read the word of God or just the gospels? That's a form, okay? What type of clothing do we wear? What type of vestment should we wear with the form? Are there certain colors that we should use on certain seasons of the year? All these things are forms, is, am I really saved until I'm water baptized? Well, what about speaking in tongues? Is that a second work of grace or the really the authentic nature of the sp- of the Holy Spirit is when I speak in tongues? All these are forms that we get caught up in. Think about this, when we prophesy in church, the Lord would say to you, thus say yeth, the Lord. That is speaking in an old English dialect that has nothing to do with God. Ye, look ye to the west, do not look ye, hear the word of the Lord today, he shall. All this stuff is old English dialects, we gotta, we got connected to a form and if somebody doesn't use old English when they prophesy, we don't think God's speaking to us. If somebody just comes up and says, you know what? I just wanna share something with you. Oh, he ain't, he, he ain't about to prophesy with nobody, he got to, you got to use the old English. Well, you're searching for eternals, et- eternal existence, connecting with an old English form. Most of us aren't even from England. Jesus was in English. The, listen to this, think about the form, stay with me. Think about the form of the King James Version of the Bible, which most Christians say is the only authentic version of the Bible. Authentic because of what? Because the King of England, King James of England? Okay, who was not even really a Christian? Decided that that was the translation and then wrote it in ye, therefore shall, wouldst, couldst. All these things that, watch this, a Middle Eastern man named Jesus would not have said. Jesus was not English, he was Eastern. Arabic is the, is the language that Jesus spoke, closer to Arabic than any, it's an ancient language, very few people even speak Arabic anymore. Jesus basically spoke Arabic. And so somehow there's a form that we've connected to in churches all across the world called the King James Version. And we wanna find eternal existence by connecting to this temporary form from the King of England. Think about the ridiculousness of where we live and we say we wanna wake up, we wanna be enlightened. All these are just little tests along the way of spirit saying, I'm gonna take this form from you, I'm gonna take this away from you, I'm gonna keep taking and taking until all that's left is spirit. All that's left is your eternal uh essential nature, alright. Let's keep coming. Um however, being is not only beyond, but also deep within every form as its innermost invisible and indestructible essence. Now look at the beauty of what Tolle just says. You can find being in these forms, but it's also beyond them. Meaning, I can connect with eternal spirit in Christianity. Yes, I can use a form, but it is not the form. Okay, remember the, remember the, the illustration we use at Spirit and Truth all the time? This water is like spirit. And as long as it's in this glass, it takes on the shape of this glass. But the glass is not the water. And you can't say water is defined as only taking this shape, because if I poured it in another glass, if I pour it out, if I pour it on my son's head right now, it takes a very different shape, doesn't it? Okay, so spirit will not be defined by form. We want it to be. We try to make it, but Tolle says, look, you can find spirit in these forms, but it's so much bigger than the forms. It's in religion, it's in philosophy, it's in healthy, he- eating healthy. Yes, there's all kinds of, in meditation, yes, there's all kinds of forms, but it's not the form. Okay, keep coming. Um this means that it is accessible to you now as your own Um, this means that it is accessible to you now as your own deepest self, your true nature, but don't seek. To grasp it with your mind, whoo, don't try to understand it. You can know it only when the mind is still. When you are present, when your attention is fully and intensely in the now, being can be felt. But it can never be understood mentally. My God, I'm trying not to stop in, on everything that he's saying right here, okay? To regain awareness of being and to abide in the state of feeling realization is enlightenment, okay? I wanna repeat um, a little part of this paragraph because we gotta, we gotta pause and stay right here, totally says this. Okay, we're gonna talk about your beingness, your oneness, your eternal uh, spiritual self, okay? He says, don't seek to grasp it with your mind. It's not an equation to be figured out, it's not a problem to be solved, it's not a treasure to be dug up somewhere, it's not in a book. It's not over the sea Moses, it's within you, okay? Then he says, don't even try to understand it, okay? You can only know it when the mind is still. Okay, let me give you some scriptures so we don't get freaked out by all this philosophy, okay? The peace of God. Okay, if we're gonna understand the peace of God, we have to release the idea that we're ever gonna understand it, why? The peace of God surpasses our understanding. That's why we don't eat from the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. I don't understand what's happening to me, God, I can't have peace in this moment. Well, things are good, I have peace now, things seem to be bad, I don't have any peace right now. Can you, can you imagine right now that we're questioning this whole idea of, of COVID nineteen? We've gotta get, everybody's kind of gotta get still, some of us gotta get in our houses, working from home. Okay, and then all of a sudden, for the first time in my lifetime, it seems like the, there is. A possibility of social change that's about to happen, when does it come about? In the middle of the greatest pandemic of our lifetimes. What does that mean? Well, I saw COVID nineteen as such an evil thing. It doesn't seem evil now that everybody has to watch, everybody has to look, everybody has to be engaged. In the protest and the riots and the, what's happening with the police and, and George Floyd and I've got to get still, why? Cause I'm not going out, I'm not leaving my house, I'm, I'm not going anywhere without my mask and my hand sanitizer and I've gotta get still. Because I'm threatened by this virus to see, to help, to give my voice, to give my presence. To this overwhelming social change that finally seems possible in our lifetimes. But if I'm connected to good or bad, I don't see the allness of what's happening. So watch this, I can't have the peace of God because it surpasses my understanding. When we surrender to thought, to figuring things out, to solving all the problems. That's finally when we create that space to say now I can understand the peace of God. That is not about the devil or about good or evil, it is about surrendering to the, to our. To not having thoughts and just letting it flow to us and then through us, okay? Let me give you another one, talking about uh, quieting your mind, still be s- s- uh, stilling your mind or getting your mind still. Or trying not to understand certain things. Uh, is when scripture says be still and know. Be still and know. What's that mean? I gotta get still, I've gotta get still and find an awareness. That is not in any kind of form that I would ca- try to connect myself with. Uh, let's keep coming, it says, I love the Buddha's simple definition of enlightenment as the end of suffering. Okay, now we're gonna jump into this and so stay here, the Buddha's simple definition of enlightenment is the end of suffering. Wow, I want that, I want the end of suffering, I wanna be enlightened to the place where I don't feel suffering anymore, okay? It's easier said than done, there is nothing su- superhuman in that, doesn't sound like it, of course, as a definition. It is incomplete, what does that mean? It only tells us what enlightenment is not. It is, it's no suffering, but it doesn't tell us what it is. Okay, it doesn't say enlightenment is Jesus, enlightenment is Buddha, enlightenment is the seventh heaven, enlightenment is. Uh, Allah, enlightenment is uh, meditation, no. It leaves it open on purpose, what it is not is suffering. So kind of what it is, is, is a life without suffering, how do we get there? What's left when there is no suffering? The Buddha is silent on that and his sen- uh, silence implies that you'll have to find out for yourself. Well, like that, doesn't give you a whole lot of definitions there, gotta find it out for yourself, he uses a negative definition. Who, wait, listen to this, he uses a negative definition. So that the mind cannot make it into something to believe in. Or into a superhuman accomplishment, a goal that is impossible for us to attain. Now, s- s- some of us for the majority of our journey, religious and spiritual journeys. Have taken great comfort in definitions, okay, the definition of what? Salvation, I confess with my mouth, I believe in my heart. I have a definition, now I can be saved and now I'm gonna find comfort. But there's really, you're still always questioning, am I saved, am I sanctified, am I filled with the Holy Ghost, have I been wa-? We connect to all these forms trun- that really are just bringing us more suffering, why? Because my definition might be different than my neighbor's definition. Now I've gotta leave my house, I've gotta go next door, my next door neighbors are, are Japanese. I've gotta go convince my Japanese Buddhist neighbor that my definition of salvation is different than his definition. And I can't be at peace because he's a really nice guy. He cuts his grass and he waves at me and he asks me if I wanna borrow some of his tools, what a sweet guy, anything you need, come over anytime and get it. Oh my God, I don't want this little Japanese man to burn in hell, why? His definition is different than mine, there it is. I have now defined God, confession, belief, Jesus of Nazareth. Oh my God, the Nakajimas don't define it the same way, I've gotta go save them, now I'm back in suffering. I'm back in suffering, my family, my Islamic friends, uh, my, the people who eat bean pies and sell the newspapers on the street. They seem so nice and, and they're dressed so well, we've gotta get them saved, I'm in suffering again. Anytime I define, put a form on something, I'm continuing suffering, asking God to help me get out of suffering. You feel it now, okay, and, and I'm, I believe in, I connect to Jesus, please, please stay with me, but we're talking on a deeper level tonight, okay? Uh, let's see, um, let, let, let me give you this example, talking about. God not wanting to, for us to attach things to labels or definitions, Moses says, God. When you send me to Pharaoh, tell me, tell me what your name is, tell me who, who I should say is sending me. Are you God, are you Yahweh, are you Jehovah, are you Allah, are you Buddha, who, who are you? And so God says to Moses, I'm not gonna tell you a definition. Because once I give you a definition, you're gonna have more form. Then it's just gonna cause more, and you can't, we can't solve this problem Moses, by using the same consciousness that created the problem. The reason that you're at war with the Egyptians, the reason that there's slavery, the reason that there's fighting between religions is because you've taken on forms. You've taken on definitions and boundaries, I can't give you my name. Because you're just gonna make more war with it, you're gonna make more chaos with it and, and then ask me for peace. So Moses, here's what I'm gonna tell you my name is, here it is. Tell him I am, that I am, has sent you. God said basically, tell him I am formless, shapeless, nameless, religionless. Skinless, cultureless, countryless, tell them that, that the awareness of the universe. The word, the Logos, the creator, the I am that I am has sent you, because if you tell him a name, we're just gonna cause more war. Hope everybody's feeling that right there, the end of suffering, um. If I can maybe describe it this way without giving it a definition, is really the end of detachments. Or, or, or learning detachment and the end of attachment. I'm attached to definitions of success and definitions of failure, that's suffering. Okay, success is this, because this is what somebody told me success was, and if I don't achieve that, I'm suffering, oh my goodness. Failure is this, and if I do that, then I'm suffering. Okay, definitions, let's go a little further, when ownership comes into play, now I'm suffering. I own a church, I own a house, I own my relationship with my family. I am owning these things instead of letting them be. Okay, uh, Wayne Dyer gave me so much help along my journey in this, when he said the ego. Tries to define you as I am what I have, okay, now think about that. During the ebbs and flows, the vicissitudes of life that bring us like this, I am what I have, sometimes what you have changes. Sometimes you have a lot, sometimes you have nothing, sometimes you go without. Am I defined by these, these ebbs and flows of life, am I defined by the stock market, by the job market? Am I defined by, okay? He goes further and says, I am what I do. So now I'm defined by my career, the roles that I play, I am. A pastor, I am a father, I am a husband, I am a son, um, I am a coach, I am a writer, I'm an author, I. What about when all those things change? What about when, when everything in your life that you defined yourself as what you do changes, we know that we are not. We are, we are human beings, not human doings, I would even say we are spiritual beings, not human doings, okay? Lastly, I am what others think of me. Think about how much suffering is involved. In what others think of me. My goodness, Jesus, uh, in, in about a three day period, he comes riding into Jerusalem. And the whole crowd is saying, Hosanna, blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord, so, so happy with him. Then finally, couple days later, the same multitude says, kill him, crucify him. He's not what we said he was, he's not what we thought he was, we put all our faith in him and now we don't know if it was right and just kill him. And so what if Jesus is, is on this pattern of I am what other people think about me? Then you can't speak your truth, you can't do what you came here to do? I hope, I hope everybody's feeling that, okay, uh, let, let's keep him, so we, uh, on the path toward the end of suffering. Here's the question that we have, what are we left with when all the definitions are gone? When I am not what I have, when I am not what I do, when I'm not what other people think about me, what is left? When the have, the do and the thought is gone, all that's left is I am. I am, I am that I am, I'm back to the eternal. Essential spiritual self that is creating the image and likeness of the I am that I am. So what is the greatest obstacle to experiencing uh, the reality of enlightenment? Identification with your mind, which causes thought to become compulsive, we talked about this last week. Just the busyness of the mind, not to be able to stop thinking is a dreadful affliction. But we don't realize this because almost everybody is suffering from it, so it is considered normal. This incessant mental noise prevents you from finding that realm of inner stillness. That is inseparable from being, it also creates a false mind that self, uh. Mind-made self that casts a shadow of fear uh, and suffering. The philosopher Descartes. Uh, believed that he found the most fundamental truth when he made his famous statement, I think, therefore I am. Ooh, I love this right here, listen to this, he had in fact given expression to the most basic error. To equate thinking with being and identity with thinking. Im- imagine this, okay, now we say this at Spirit and Truth, not every week, but, but regularly we talk about this. We are not our beliefs, I am not my beliefs. I believe one thing at twenty, I believe something different at thirty, I believe something now different at forty. When I turn fifteen in a couple years, my beliefs are gonna continue to change, that's why Jesus said you have heard of old, but I say. And when spirit comes, spirit's even gonna give you more stuff, so I can't, if I get connected to what I believe. When spirit starts bringing more things, I am now in suffering. Because I need to go get DE saved because he changed the way he believed. I need to bring him back to the way we believed at the cathedral and the case center and I get, get him back on the right way, no. What happened to DE is he's chose not to be connected to beliefs anymore. But we say it this way, I am not my beliefs, as Tony would say, I'm not even my thoughts. I am the spirit capable of thinking, capable of having beliefs, but I'm not the beliefs. I'm not the thoughts, I'm just the eternal spirit that's capable, the greater spirit within us. Is hungry to not be attached to any specific thought or idea. So just to have the awareness that you're capable of it, that's what totally is just being, pure being, not the thoughts, not the beliefs. Just a pure being that's capable of doing that, the compulsive thinker, uh, which means almost everyone. Lives in a state of apparent separateness. In an insanely complex world of continuous problems and conflict. A world that reflects the ever increasing fragmentation of the mind, whoo. The greatest way we do it in Chr- in our Christian churches is the double mindedness of God and devil. Good and evil, a double minded man is unstable in all of his ways. Enlightenment is a state of wholeness, of being or at one or at oneness, atonement. Jesus brought atonement at onement, I'm at peace with you, you're at peace with God, make your peace with God, okay, and therefore peace. Uh, at one with life in its manifested aspect, the world, uh, as well as with your deepest self. Enlightenment is not only the end of suffering and of continuous conflict within and without. But also the end of the dreadful enslavement to incessant thinking. Always trying to figure it out, always find, trying to find a solution to the problems that we're creating ourselves, okay? What an incredible liberation. Who, this is, that was a lot tonight, that was a lot, I know we're, I kept looking at my watch going, wow, it's already. We're already fifty minutes into this thing, I'm, uh, I, I certainly don't apologize because it's just, it's just so good, there's so much. Connection between what totally is saying and my, my own spiritual path and what's, what's brought me to this place and so. Uh, we're gonna open up from some comments, before we do that, I want us to kind of stay in this moment for, for, for just a minute. And I want us, I want you to say this and repeat this after me out loud, uh, just say this, I am ready for this journey. Into myself and soul. So the journey is not into the power of now, the journey is not into the Bible, the journey is not into a new series. This journey is into us. Into for, into our forms that we've taken on, into our beliefs, into our thoughts, into um, our separations and segregation, so the journey. Even though the power of now is what we're using, it's really a journey, the power of now is saying, it's not about this. It's about the journey into you, the journey into yourself and into your soul, and so with that, um, I think we'll open up for some comments tonight.
Yeah, well, along that vein, uh, Patricia wrote in, whatever is within you will manifest without. And um, then Callie said being can only be found in the now, Virgie, the being can never be understood mentally. Um, but I just wanted to, to also note that along one of the times, several people, Justina, Margie, Lenora just wrote in, I am.
I attended um, a conference um, in Los Angeles with Bishop Pearson. I don't know, five or ten years ago and uh, was at um, Agape, which is uh, Dr. Michael Beckwith Spiritual, Spiritual Center. And I'm used to going in churches and seeing name tags, you know, oh, hus- uh, hostesses or ushers. And um, or even, I am an usher, I am a hostess, I am the pastor, I am the singer, I am the worship leader, I am. Whatever, I'm the security. But everybody there at this, this spiritual center at Dr. Beckwith Church, their name tag just said, I am. And I kept, and at first I thought, I was a little slow, I thought, what an interesting name, that person's name is I am. It's this name tag, then when I found ten other people that had the same name. I realized, oh, this is, his name is not I am, they're saying, I am. I am not an usher, I'm not the pastor, I'm not a preacher, I'm not the security, I'm not defined by my role, I am spirit. And, and this is what I'm inviting you into with me, let's do this together, it's interesting, um, uh, one of the comments was. About like getting past the mind, uh, I think Patricia said, whatever is within us. Will be manifested without a, without, and so think about. Think about what religion puts inside of us, okay? And just give me some, give me some room here, okay? Religion basically trains us to believe our way is the way. Okay, our savior is the savior, our holy book is the holy book. Our way of thinking is the only way of thinking, our path to God is the only legitimate path to God. All other paths are counterfeits and so if that's within us. That conflict with everything else around us is going to manifest itself, it manifests itself as missionaries. As evangelism, as uh, proselytizing. As um, trying to get everybody to think like we think and until they do, we can't really be at peace. Taken to its furthest extent, nation rising against nation, religion rising against religion, that's where. Religion rising against religion, that's where we talked a couple of months ago about the nation of Pakistan. Pakistan was just a part of India. Pakistan literally a hundred years ago was just a part of the of the of the nation or the country of India. And so what happened is that the Hindus and Muslims could not get along with each other. Because the Muslims said, you gotta do it our way, you gotta use our name for God, you gotta read the Quran, you gotta do what Allah says. And the Hindus said, we don't do it that way, we believe God in a different way, why don't we just live and let live? The Muslims could not handle it, you gotta do it our way, Hindus. And so what happened was they said, all right. We can't coexist because the thing within us is now expressing without and we're starting to kill each other, it's starting to turn into violence. So what happens is India cut off the western portion of India and made it Pakistan and said, all right. All the Muslims move over here. All the Hindus stay over here in India, Muslims, you're gonna now be called Pakistan. India, you're gonna be Hindus, you're gonna remain be called. But but think about, think about the level of admission of defeat of that. We are so bound to our forms and what we think we know God to be. That we've gotta separate dividing lines between nations now because of how connected we are to form. That is amazing to me. And so hopefully we're finally at the place, Spirit and Truth, where we're saying, I am bigger than form. Yes, I do connect to God through Jesus and through the Bible and through the way we sing with a hymn and be on Sunday, yeah, so. God can use form, but God is not the form. I love that Patricia, thank you for sharing, thank you for, those are amazing, yes.
So Terry Sasego wrote, um I just love this study, the end of suffering for me means regardless of the distractions and turmoil around me. I can still tap into the joy and peace within that part of me that is connected to source.
Wow, 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 the end of suffering for me is not connected to what's going on around me. And so when there's peace everywhere, then that peace will get inside of me. It's, you know, Terry, it's actually actually the opposite of that. When there's peace in me, it will spill out a- around me. And so um I found peace in a really weird way and I may have told this story recently to everybody, but when. What I perceived as one of the most difficult seasons of my life. I couldn't find a solution, I couldn't fix it, I cou- I couldn't fix the problem, I couldn't get people to understand, I couldn't even understand it myself. And so I would do my best during the day dealing with this s- season of problems. And at night, for a while, I was taking all that home with me. And I would get in bed frustrated and worried and uptight and my body was weird and my mind was weird and just all these things were happening. And finally, I just had this vision of taking these problems and just putting them on a shelf somewhere and saying, I'm not sleeping with this tonight. And I didn't do it through prayer, it wasn't meditation, I'm not saying that 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 form doesn't work for you. The form I used was watching funny movies, watching something comical. And even something that may be a little bit irreverent and probably we wouldn't wanna say some of those words on a Sunday morning in our form called church, okay? But for me, it saved my life, I'm still connected to to the specific movie now because. It kept me sane, it kept me laughing, it kept me feeling some sense of normalcy when my life was turned upside down and so. Does that mean, watch this, that a that this specific movie is my Savior now? No, that's just a form that helped to bring peace and so. It could be singing, it could be prayer, it could be meditation, it could be reading the Bible, it could be fasting. It could be going on doing hot yoga, it could be going to retreat and climbing Mount Kilimanjaro, it could be. Finding a trainer, it could be getting a life coach. All these forms are great, but that is not what it is. The forms are just there to serve in a in a specific season. And so let those things be be a a guide, but they are not who you are and you don't need those things eternally.
Vincent wrote an awesome and encouraging mes- message, Namaste, there are many candles, but only one light.
Love that, many candles, but only one light, I've I've never heard it quite that way, many candles. But only one light, I read uh a book ten fifteen years ago called. Um many wells, but one river. Or maybe it was one one river, many wells, meaning there are many smaller tributaries, okay? Religions, philosophies, exercise, healthy eating, vacations, philosophies, whatever. There are many smaller tributaries streams, but they flow into a great river that's called God. Okay, here it is, so there are many candles, but there's only one light. Okay, there are many religions, but there's only one I am. There are many names for God, but God is without name, we can say it many different ways. What Vincent tapped into is, once you get past the form, God is all there is. All there is is God, beautiful, thank you for sharing that Vincent.
James Card uh wrote, I love the labelless life and I strive daily to achieve it.
Yay, James Card, and and I know that that's um. That's a true journey for for you, James. We we've talked how many nights, James and I used to play a lot of basketball together. And after the playing basketball was over, we would sit for hours and just talk about the bigness of God and. God's speaking something new to me, it's bigger than religion, it's bigger than these things and so. James is kinda like a a a bee going to all the different flowers, he's. He's was raised Chr- Christian, I think he still connects to God through that in some ways. He has spent time studying Islam and pro- probably other ways of thinking, if he's. Reading Eckhart Tolle tonight, he's in he's in new thought and so what does that mean? James is not a Christian, James is not a Muslim, James is not new thought, James is formless, he is labelless. I don't even wanna say he, it is labelless. The it that we call James, the he, the black man that lives in Georgia, no, all those are our labels. It, spirit is labelless, beautiful, James Carter, love it.
So uh Dr. Ray wrote in, and this is kinda my my personal comment as well, but she wrote in early on, happy winning Wednesday. Before we even started the teaching, that was her comment. Just kinda wanted to say, I'm gonna come around and say. Just wanted to say, uh Dr. Ray, that is what today was, I mean, I I just feel like I won today, I I. Happy winning Wednesday because being able to see and DE doesn't always see kinda the energy. And a lot of the comments on the other side of the camera, but it almost always brings me to tears and it's just a joy to stay connected with you all and so. To end on a on a lighter note, you know, just happy winning Wednesday evening to you all.
Perfect, perfect, Dr. Ray, thank you, thank you for that, how beautiful, I love it that you said you were winning before it even began. We say it in church, don't wait till the battle's over, shout now, um. Think about this, evil is a form, good is a form. My cert- my situations, all these are definitions, no, I am winning before I even connect with any form. A promotion, a demotion, getting fired, getting hired, uh getting married, getting divorced. All these are things, we are not the things that happen to us. We are the spirit, it's almost like in Buddhism, it describes us as the observer, I'm not all those things. I'm the spirit observing these things and not getting connected to any of them, we're gonna talk about probably a little later in this book, The Power of Now. About the pain, Eckhart Tolle talks about having a pain body, what does that mean? My body has now taken on the form of the things that have happened to me. I had a bad childhood, ooh, I had a divorce, ooh, I was molested, I was abused, yes. Awful, tragic, all of us have some crazy story of something awful that's happened to us. But when you see that thing manifest in your body, you've taken that form onto yourself. If they remember the three Hebrew children were in the fire, but the fire did not touch them. They didn't even smell like it, and so we come through seasons of what we perceive as difficulty, seasons of joy. We are not the joy, we are not the difficulty, we are the eternal spirit that's bigger than any of those labeled things, so. Wow, tonight was amazing, how amazing was tonight, your comments just kinda. Crazy good tonight and I know Brandy kinda does, she has a big job trying to take. You know, if there's fifteen or twenty comments, she tries to say, okay, this is an area, people are talking about this and that, but. We love it, it certainly uh spawns thinking, iron sharpens iron, as one man, one woman sharpens another, the deep in me. Calls to the deep in you and that's kind of a reciprocal thing and so, thank you for sharing with us tonight, um. I don't know, we were we gonna send some shouts out tonight? Let me put my, let me put my glasses back, my form back on, let me put my glasses back on, I am not my old eyes. I'm just the spirit who has old eyes right now in your face, okay. Uh we wanna give some shouts out tonight to all the beautiful people who are joining us in this journey. Uh Miss Emma, Will, uh Roberta, Cat. Wow, she said from uh from the Ozarks in Kentucky, thank you Cat for sharing with us. Courtney, Caroline, Carolaint, Pastor Cash's. Esther, uh Myrna, Lenora, Elaine, Jeffries, what you mean jelly bean? Reverend David Michael and John, Fred and Mary, uh Dee Baskin. Uh Terry, Doreen, Susan, Justina, Alita, Laverne. And it's all, it's interesting, Brandy always puts Laverne and Sheila right after it, I wanna say Laverne and Shirley.
No, they always are together.
Yay, Laverne and Sheila, Laverne and Sheila. Glenna, Gloria, Cindy, Callie, Dana and Hannah, uh Tony, Rosaleen. Mom and Dad, hey, Mom and Dad, uh Donnie and Gina, Miss Virgie, Benny and Marla, Amy, Crissas. Uh Ivy and Margie, the the youngest people I've ever met, Ivy and Margie, precious, precious, Homer. Uh Richard, Jennifer, Jennifer Col- Colberson is my gossip friend, we we take on the form of, cause she comes on Wednesday nights and. I know she misses coming on Wednesday nights cause she sits near my parents. So that when my parents say something crazy, she's like, ooh, I love hearing your parents bicker with each other, that just gives me joy. Uh Natasha, Me- Me- uh Michelle Prescott. Uh James, Crystal, Gregory, Regina Scott, the happiest person I know, Regina Scott. Uh Apostle Wayne Clap, what you doing my Star Trek buddy? Um Vincent and Sylvia Garrett, precious, precious people, thank you for joining us tonight. Uh we love you guys, we miss you so much, we're so glad that everybody's connecting. Uh with us and and going through this teaching together, I let me continue to encourage you. I don't care if somebody's a Christian, Muslim, Hindu, Buddhist. This power of now is really a labelless teaching. I don't care what religion you're part of, or if you're even agnostic or atheist, atheistic, you don't even believe in God. There is something to be gained from this journey and um I encourage you to be a part of it, I'm excited, I don't. I can't wait until next Wednesday, see what's gonna be next, what what are we gonna go through next and so let's keep journeying, let's keep waking up together. We love you guys, go in peace, may God bless and we'll see you Sunday morning, ten o'clock.